In Town Council Regular Regular Meeting of July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, if we can all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To be public with one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Terry, if you could take the roll call.
Mr. Kuss.
Here.
Mr. Dixon.
Here.
Mrs. Diglio.
Here.
Mrs. Cheats.
Here.
Mayor LaFaw.
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January third, twenty twenty five. So we all received the minutes from the June twenty third, twenty twenty five regular meeting. Do we have any additional changes? Discussion. All right, can I have a motion to approve?
I will make the motion to approve the June twenty third, twenty twenty five regular minutes.
And I will second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilwoman Cheats. A roll call, please.
Mr. Kuss.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Cheats.
Yes.
Mayor LaFaw.
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the Town Council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to be heard, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to comment after the entire public portion has concluded. We will start with anyone in the room that wishes to make a comment. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record when you approach the microphone. All right, seeing none. Mr. Russo, anyone online?
No raised.
All right, seeing no raised hands, we will close that open to the public portion of the meeting. We'll move on to council and manager reports. Mr. Russo.
Not at this time, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Kuss.
Just mentioned that I believe we all received email from a resident on Liberty Street who expressed some concerns and suggestions about the change in traffic flow on Linwood Annex. I happened to meet with him onsite yesterday and I communicated my perspective to the mayor, who's going to circle that back to the professionals and Mr. Russo. I think there might be some validity and I think there's some room to maybe accommodate everyone's needs.
So actually, Corey, town engineer, Mr. Russo, Adam, there was a team of us that went onsite today and then Corey and I went and spoke to the wife of the emailer. So Corey is going to be looking at the entire location and providing some suggestions. So we actually also took the input from the homeowner who expressed their concern with the current setup, so.
Very good.
Thank you for responding. I know that Councilwoman Cheats also responded and I think we received the email.
That's all that I have.
Okay. Councilwoman Diglio.
Okay, just one thing. Last Wednesday, June ninth, the Greater Newton Chamber of Commerce along with the town of Newton declared that as DPW Appreciation Day. We went down and we provided lunch for the DPW workers and we wanted to thank them for all that they do for this town because I don't think the residents had any idea of what these DPW workers do morning, noon, and night. They're there when there's water main breaks. So yes, I want to send my sincere thank you to to all the DPW workers, water and main workers. Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right, Councilwoman Cheats.
I just have a couple of things to the DPW. Sorry, I missed the appreciation lunch, but I think you guys, I hope you know how appreciated you are. I think you know, out of most entities in the town of Newton, the DPW guys get really good comments, even from some residents that I don't often see positive comments. They're GPW, you have set the bar high, so that's great. And the next school board meeting is next Tuesday. I have nothing to report for that. And just this past Saturday, speaking of DPW, they were along with the mayor and I at the Sussex County Community College for the Concert on the Green. A very well-attended event. I was extremely happy to see that. There was probably more than four hundred people. The parking lot was full, you know, the the green was full, the food truck was great, the ice cream truck was great. And I look forward to the next, I think we have a movie coming up and then concert, but I don't have the date, so I'm hoping Mayor LaFaw does. That's all. Thank you.
Mayor Dixon.
Just one thing, housekeeping. The July, plenty more meeting is canceled due to any business, so the next one will be in August. And that's all.
Thank you. Okay, a couple of things. I also was able to attend our DPW Appreciation Day co-sponsored by the town of Newton and the Greater Newton Chamber of Commerce. It was great to see the entire team, Adam, all in one space. Because as Councilwoman Cheats indicated, I think a lot of residents don't realize the depth and the breadth of the team and the work that really goes oftentimes unnoticed, but when you don't do the work, it definitely goes noticed, right? So again, just I think expressing our gratitude and appreciation. Not only do the guys, are the guys so responsive, but they are often and often more than not doing their job with a smile and really will go above and beyond and really are the ones that make this town when people come into town, make it a show in its best light. And we're very appreciative of the work, not only supporting, you know, the chamber and when we have events all over town, but I mean, just water main breaks, storm response, the day-to-day work and maintaining all of our properties. So again, thank you. Then the following day, Officer Bellis and Kimberly Williams, on invitation from the chief, attended, we attended a collaborative meeting, I would say, at the Mental Health Association of the Newton Nonprofits. And the police department really was the organizer of this meeting, short notice meeting, because each of the council members, business owners, certainly Tom and his team have had many calls and concerns lately about the perception of the homeless situation in the town of Newton. So it was good to get all of the providers of various human services around the table, along with the Sussex County Department of Health and Human Services, to just talk about, again, the perception, right? And there were lots of good notes that were made that not everyone, you know, it's summertime, people are out, and not everyone that's out is homeless per se. We have a new organization or new spot on Spring Street called The Gathering Place that has recently been established, which is providing outreach services and some other services to population that needs it, that need them. And so we had a good, healthy conversation around what the nonprofit service providers are providing in terms of services, but also what the clients that are coming in are looking for in terms of services and how kind of the word on the street from Port Jervis to right over the border of, you know, New York, Pennsylvania and everything between. A lot of people that are looking for human services have gotten word that that Newton is a place where you can seek help. So this is not just unhoused individuals, but these are veterans, these are food insecure, these are domestic violence victims and underserved populations in our community. So who wasn't in the room were some of the faith-based organizations, nor was there healthcare. So we have some next steps. I've talked with Tom, I've talked with the chief. Thank you for taking my call after that evening. Officer Bellis represented the department well, and if there was absolutely unequivocally, one thing that everyone agreed upon at the round the table was the professionalism, the response, and the amazing work that the Newton Police Department does. Whether it's been participants that have called for services, or if it's been the service providers themselves that have looked for resources, the Newton Police Department's been gone above and beyond, and that was reiterated many, many times. So some of our next steps is that we want to get a comprehensive list, and the county has one started, but a comprehensive list of all the service providers and what they do. And get that on a laminated sort of piece of paper that everybody can have access to. There's going to be some coordinated outreach by some of the nonprofits. I would like to see some coordinated point of entry for people that are looking for services, so that, you know, in terms of the the draw on the resources of the county, that that's going through a coordinated community response. We, I would like, where our next conversation, like I said, is going to include the faith-based organizations, which are also providing services. We talked a lot also about the response of the Newton First Aid Squad. So to both of you, I reiterated that, you know, of the twenty-four hundred plus calls last year that you all responded to, many of them are quality of life calls. And so, you know, working in in concert with all of you, I think having, being present at these meetings would be super helpful as well. So I think there's going to be some outreach. I think there's hopefully going to be some coordinated community response. There's going to be some sharing of at least information and resources. The county offered some information, so it was really just a beginning conversation. And again, perception-wise, this Tom and the and the team, this council and several council iterations of councils beforehand over the last almost nearly twenty years have done a really good job in conjunction with the Newton Police Department, all our first responders, in really diluting and trying to get rid of the perception that the town of Newton is not safe. And for people to now start to get a sense that, you know, there's a there's a societal issue going on in the town of Newton and it's not safe to come to. We want to get, you know, start to get ahead of this conversation and have some clarity on what the next steps are, knowing that this is, this is a marathon and not a sprint. There, this is a multifaceted. There's not one solution. I think there's a lot of work to be done around education. I think there's a lot of work to be done, you know, certainly on behalf of the nonprofits, and that's not a thing, like, that's obviously my work. But, you know, our police department is responding appropriately and within, I think, all of the tools that you have at your disposal to be able to respond both to providers and to people that are needing services. And so I would just say to our businesses and our visitors and our residents is to be patient, be compassionate, and understand that we hear you and we are working on a solution that is not entirely ours to find a solution for, that we, Deputy Mayor Dixon and I have talked, the county's involvement really needs to be front and center in this conversation as well. And so it was nice to have the Department of Health and Human Services there, but I think we want to get some commissioners into the conversation as well. So we'll keep you posted. And like I said, this is not a one-and-done, it's a continued conversation. Chief, is there anything that you wanted to add to that? Chief Danville?
Sure.
Okay.
Although the Newton Police Department is definitely grounded in compassion and helping people, I just want to let the council be aware and the public, we are enforcing law. Over the past month, we've issued over sixty summonses to people that are breaking the law. Although we are compassionate with helping people when the law is broken, we are taking.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to shy away from that as well, is is law enforcement is doing the law enforcement's job on top of trying to help as much as we can.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that perspective as well, because, you know, some of the, some of the noise is that, you know, where is the police department? What's, why isn't there?
We're there.
Right.
Everything that we are able to do.
Good. Thank you.
And Mayor, to that, council received a memo that I sent out because there's been other complaints that have come to my office the past few weeks, so you have a kind of a list of what the different departments are doing to assist in this and lead in this endeavor, but I also want to give credit to Officer Kuss because he's kind of on the front line of this and is, you know, working additional hours, you know, in terms of coverage. So I want to thank Raul because he's, he's in the middle of those conversations in real time. And it's appreciative that he's there because I think we need that additional presence on the street, so.
Yes, absolutely. So thank you. So yes, Councilwoman Cheats and I had fun rocking out to the eighties revolution on, on, on Friday night, Saturday night, sorry. Good turnout. I think last count Jenny told me like it was over four hundred and fifty, so it was great to look back and see the lawn filled with people having a great time. The weather held out and I want to thank, you know, Sussex County Community College, Thor Labs, our DPW team, Newton First Aid Squad for being present. We had retail ice cream and Davey's All-American Hot Dog Truck, and as Michelle said, they were well-received. You know, Kimberly Williams and the Community Development Team, everyone that helped to put the the night on. It was, it was great. And our next event coming up on July twenty-fifth is the outdoor movie night. And social media has spoken and Mufasa will be shown, so we hope all of our families will come out to that event. On the fourteenth, today, actually, Councilwoman Diglio and I, along with DPW, Corey, Terry, Kat, the whole group of us went out and Tom, did I say Tom? Tom, yes, went out and toured the Newton Recycling Center. Man, that's an awesome facility. That is just getting better and better and better. But we, Debbie really kind of just laid out for us all of the items that Newton residents could come and bring to the recycling center and then kind of outlined with us the vision of the Newton Recycling Center two point O. Is that the official name, Adam? Okay. In terms of making it even safer, because it is getting busier there with three lanes of traffic and that we talked about the ingress and the egress and some plans for that, so more to come. But if you haven't been to the Newton Recycling Center, we can take pretty much everything and good work being done and some new revenue sources to the, to the, to the town's bottom line, which is great. And then we took a little jaunt over to the roller hockey facility. The weather has not been our friend to the, to the grounds or the covering there, so really just looking at what our options are in terms of making sure that that is a safe facility for our hockey players and looking at what our options are with the ground there. So more to come on that as well. And then JP, as I mentioned, a group of us then went over to Linwood Annex to look at the one-way situation there. So thank you all today for being out in the heat and we missed the rain for the most part to tour those facilities. So this weekend is the townwide garage sale. I heard that we have over eighty participants. Is that correct, Terry? Which is really great.
Eighty on the map, so if anybody comes in after this, they'll still be included in it, but not on the map.
Okay, so I think the map is going to be ready tomorrow and we're going to put that on our website in addition to having printed copies available at Town Hall, the clerk's office.
Yep, and the police department. It'll be at newntownhall.com/garagesale.
Great, so be a fun day going out and walking the town and looking at all the steals and deals. And then coming up also on July twenty-eighth is the Newton Fire Department's annual golf outing. There are still, I checked in with chief the other night, there are still sponsorships available starting at a hundred fifty dollars. I think there are still golf
foursomes.
Foursomes available, right? Maybe even some singles and doubles. So if you're a golfer and want to check out the, it's at Newton Country Club, right?
Yeah.
This is a great outing to attend and support our fire department at the same time. I think that's all I have. All right. We do have unfinished business. This is Resolution one seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-five, and this is a resolution to appoint members to various boards and commissions. This is carried from our June twenty-third meeting. So we've had some recent vacancies and the council has not had the opportunity to take a global look at all of the vacancies on our boards and our commissions, so I'd like to continue to table this resolution. And should we just move it to our August? August eleventh meeting?
Yeah, we moved both one seventy-eight and then one seventy-nine.
And then the same for one seventy-nine, yep, to carry them to our August eleventh meeting. And then Deputy Mayor Dixon and I, on our call this week, we can talk to Tom and Kat just about getting an overview of all the vacancies with the recent resignations and Kat, and then the council can take a look at all of them and all of the applicants and, and do we have to figure out from next steps?
To carry it or just leave?
Do a motion second.
Okay, do I have a?
Voice vote, just to formalize that you're carrying it. The dates are.
So can I do both at the same time? Resolution one seventy-eight and one seventy-nine? Okay, do I have a motion to table those? Or I guess I made the motion. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Okay, so a motion by myself, a second by Councilwoman Diglio to table resolutions one seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-five and one seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-five to the August eleventh meeting. A roll call, please.
Mr. Kuss.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Cheats.
Yes.
Mayor LaFaw.
Yes. Okay, thank you. And then tonight, we have a couple of items for discussion. Mr. Russo.
Yes, I want to thank the council for allowing us to have a couple of presentations. First will be the twenty twenty-four municipal audit. Tom Ferry will sit the groundwork and then we have our auditor, John Mooney, to talk about some before distributed and some findings. Tom, lawyers.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. So we have John. We have Mr. Moody here to go over the audit. When he came here, when they, his team came here, I told them to look at everything and write everything down, no matter how small. So there are more comments than normal, but they're on a Richter scale of one to ten, ten being the worst, or one or a two. But I don't take it lightly. I wanted them to basically turn the whole place upside down, shake it, see what falls out, so that I could go moving forward, I can go in and fix whatever was there. So things look pretty good, but I think I'll let John take over.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. We've been here two years now and this is the first time I'm actually getting in front of you. I have offered to come to different meetings in the past, but I've been told no by Mr. Russo and Mr. Ferry. But I am here tonight and, you know, they asked me, we, we met about three weeks ago and they asked me to keep my comments to just under an hour or so. It's just seeing who's paying attention.
Yep.
I was supposed to have Brian Gibbons with me tonight. Brian's my right-hand man here. Brian is set to become a partner in a couple of years. He's going through the the rigors now, but an incredibly talented person that you have doing the day-to-day audit work out here in the field. Unfortunately, he threw his back out and doing some chores over the weekend, so I gave him the night off just to, just to let him recoup and recover. I'm not going to go through a lot of your numbers in detail because we did that about three weeks ago. Just give you the kind of highlights of where you're at. You have a very stable fund balance is what you have left over at the end of the day when the the year is closed. You were down about two hundred thousand dollars, but on a four-point-two-million-dollar fund balance, to me, that's relatively stable. And you have procedures in place when it comes to the future-year budget where you're using less of the fund balance. So we're seeing it, you know, stay stable and continue to be on that path, so we're happy with seeing that. Just a couple of quick highlights, you know, one of the things that we look at is where your tax collection percentage is. Again, another very stable number at around ninety-eight and a half percent, and it's been this way for at least the last three years. So excellent tax percent, excellent collection rate, and we hope to see that continue as well. There's really no reason why it shouldn't. You do have some funds put aside for rainy days, one of them being the Storm Recovery Trust Fund, which allows you to take some pressure off your budget if you start to see major storms. It allows you to tap into a reserve that you're putting aside year over year, so we like to see that. Same thing with the accumulated absence trust. You know, we like to see that number go as much as it could be, so that if you have retirements and payouts, you're not straining your current, your budget, you're going to the trust fund and utilizing this. You, when it comes to your capital and your water sewer, you have a lot going on. I think you already know that, though, so I'm not going to go into great detail with that, but there is a lot going on. And that's kind of my theme, just, just to kind of wrap it all up here, is that there's a lot happening in the town of Newton. You have a lot of pilot revenue coming in. You have a lot of shared service, whether it's, you are, well, you are mainly the administrator of. You have many grants, you know, the grant funding here is tremendous, which is a great thing. We had a federal and a state single audit this year. I believe we had a state single, well, we had single audit this year, which means you're spending grant revenue, which means money's coming in from outside sources, not your taxpayers, so you're able to use grant funding to pay for projects. We like to see that. You have a lot going on with water capital with the, and sewer capital with the I-Bank loans and the debt service there. And you really need strong people in place. And I believe, I truly believe that you have that, and it's not just because I'm sitting next to Mr. Ferry and Mr. Russo. I really think that you have quality people in the right places in the municipality, whether it's the clerk's office, whether it's the tax collector, again, the CFO or the manager. And that definitely helps you when you're trying to wrap your arms around all of these major items that you have. I think the transition went relatively well. We really haven't seen any disruption in the CFO's office since your former CFO had retired. And I only worked with her for six months, but I thought the world of her, very conscientious, and I think that you, you picked the right person to be your next CFO and take you into the next several years, so very happy with all of that. And Tom and I were competitors at one point, but I still can say that because I still have respect for Tom and I respect what he does. And you need that, you need that accounting mind and you need that follow-through and conscientiousness and, and we see it. So I know, you know, with those department heads, you also have the DPW, which you just sang their praises, and I told this story when we, when I, when I came in the other day. I was also pulled over in town by a police officer and the gentleman could not have been nicer, all right? I didn't get a ticket, so maybe I was happy about that, too. But I mean, from top to bottom and all over throughout the town, we haven't seen anything that would really come to the rise to the attention where we're going to say, all right, we've got some problems here that we need to address. Our experience has been very positive so far and I hope it continues. There were a few recommendations that we did have, but you know, I, I heard the word housekeeping earlier. These are housekeeping-type issues. I do not expect them to be repeat recommendations going into next year.
So those things listed at the bottom of page two, I would imagine have already been some processes put in place to.
So the cash receipts in the police office already taken care of, deposit have been in forty-eight hours taken care of. In the planning and zoning, we have a part-timer, so I don't want to throw that on, but as soon as we, we go through the process, hire somebody, I'll implement a cash receipts journal there. As for the purchasing prior to encumbrances, I'm still working on that.
Okay.
And I just want to, I don't want to take up my whole hour here. I just want to say, you know, and so that you can understand where you relate to other municipalities. One of the things that I look at to know if you're getting the correct information or not is the number of journal entries that I write at the end of the year. I know it's accounting and it's an egghead type issue, but the fewer the entries means you're getting the correct information on a monthly basis. You're getting correct information to base your decisions off of, so you can rely on it because we had very, very few. I think we had three journal entries. There are towns where I wrote over fifty.
Yeah.
All right, those towns are getting poor information on a regular basis and it's, it's horrible. Here, so much better. So I just want to let you know that that's how I judge, tend to judge it. There's very few corrections that are made after the year is closed and I appreciate that.
That's probably been true for the last forty years. Seriously.
That's great.
Tonight's not the only night you get to talk to me. If there's anything during the course of the year where you've want to raise your hand and say, hey, I have a question, I'm more than happy to help you out, informations with both of these gentlemen, so.
Yeah, and Tom, I think your strategy in, in turning everything upside down is the first time, like, you're going through it from the CFO and CFO's position is probably the right strategy to take, because why not have, you know?
Another set of eyes is always, always a beautiful thing. Yeah. Some of the comments, we, you know, as an auditor, we noted some of these things, but we had, I, I got actually, we have peer reviews when I was an auditor, so that's auditors looking at auditors. And I always used to get the comment, you're doing too much. So I never used to write the little small stuff, but I wanted John to put everything in so that you see that the place is running perfectly and I'll fix whatever. Actually, the police is already fixed. Planning board will be fixed once we get somebody.
Yeah.
And then we move on.
Well, and this is everything and it's.
Oh, inventory. So years ago, I implemented de-inventory and I think it was maybe when Eileen was the CFO. And that hasn't been updated in years, so it's basically for the water and sewer department, the number of, let's say, meters, pipes and everything. So me and Jason already talked about it, December thirty-first, he's going to give me a list. I'll update it, make a journal entry, get it all up to date, so that the comment will be gone. Very simple.
And what Mr. Ferry doesn't know is we're going to turn it upside down again next year, too, because.
Because you can.
My dad.
And he's going to dare you to find anything. And he's going to dare you to find anything. Any questions? Mr. Russo, anything to add?
No, I appreciate John's efforts and Brian, you know, they put a lot of effort into this audit and you know, the other audits for the towns. The LoSAP and the Parking Authority, it's been a pleasure to work with them and um, yeah, we take the comments seriously, so we'll work. Tom and I will work together to make sure it's as digital.
And the team that he brought was, you know, up to stuff, definitely way up to par. Very good.
Thank you.
You would know. Anything else, Mr. Ferry? Anything else? Good, good, alright. Mr. Russo, next.
I know, I'm sorry. Thank you, everybody.
Moody, thank you very much. Safe travels, bud.
Right, man. Next presentation, Enterprise Fleet Management. Andrew Luck, not the football player. And Tom Perry will walk us through. A little bit of the information.
How you doing?
Thank you. Good to meet you, Helen. Absolutely. Thank you.
So, me and Andrew have been working when I was in Dover.
Yep.
When I was in Dover, me and Andrew were working together, um, working on their equi, their vehicles. Um, so when I came here, um, I wanted Andrew to go through and look at our, our, our vehicles. Being the road department, the police department, um ambulance, ACOs, all the, except for fire trucks. You know, it includes fire vehicles. Um, and basically what, and I don't want to steal his thunder, so I think we've been talking at least maybe ten months. Going over everything, talking with financial guys, going over pretty much everything. Just to let you know that this is just not a second thought that I came up with. We've been grinding numbers. He has the, our, our vehicles, right down to the VIN numbers, looking up the information on those Vins. And coming up with a strategic, strategic plan. Um, bottom line is that um, we save money. He'll go over all the information. You have um, the one we sent out. Um, of his proposal and it basically gives you like a broad stroke of what they do, how they do it. And what they found in Newton. Um, and again, I don't want to steal their thunder. I do have a secondary, I have two more uh pieces of information that I'm going to hand out. Um, that Andrew can go over and it ba- basically goes in detail of all our equip, all our vehicles. How old they are. Um, and I asked the chief. And Adam and Jason to, to give you a brief description of some of the vehicle and some of the um. Horror stories of some of the, the vehicles, which I've heard over all the years. Um, so like I said, this one, it says fleet profile. This goes into detail of um. Our vehicles, how old they are, what the average life is and yada, yada, yada. Um, this one is a um list of the vehicles and the top ones are the ones that Andrew came up with. Um, that probably need replacing, probably sooner than later. Um, and this starts the ball rolling. Bottom line is that we start with a lease and we start leasing vehicles on a rotating basis. And then we start cutting down on uh being reactive rather than proactive. And go on a rotating basis. The lease is in our name. Andrew can cut him loose whenever we want. They're still our vehicles. He basically, he charged, he basically looks at all the vehicles. We have someone representing him, looking at it three times and, three times a year. Um, and then um, it's, he's got software that tells us when oil changes are due and when breaks are due. And basically what happens is that we get newer vehicles, the gas miles go down, they're extremely safer vehicles. Um, and the maintenance goes way down too because they're all new vehicles. We still keep the maintenance part. Um, for oil changes and small stuff. Um, but the bottom line is, we don't buy vehicles and bond for them. Over ten years and get rid of them in three. So that is a major um problem. Because you, we do it in a bond ordinance and I pay off a bond ordinance within ten years if I don't permanently finance it. So the vehicles are in there. Now we scrap them and they'd be gone or they're totally worthless over a hundred thousand miles. And we're still paying them off. This gets us on a, gets us on a rotating basis and saves us money over the long haul. I don't want to, again, I don't want to steal um Andrew's thunder, but if you want, Andrew, take it off.
Yeah. Thanks, Tom. We've known each other long enough. You, you could just do this for me. I don't even need to be here. I'm just kidding. I, we appreciate you, you having Rob and I here this evening. Uh, like Tom had mentioned, I've been working with him for quite some time and developing a plan, but. Just to provide a thirty thousand foot view of what we're looking to help the Newton accomplish. Is we're looking to reduce the overall average age of the fleet of vehicles that you operate as a town. We're looking to uh help alleviate budget concerns, concerns when it comes to acquiring new vehicles and opening up budget dollars. And at the end of the, and then lastly, we're looking to take advantage of the equity that's in the fleet of vehicles. And leverage Enterprise's national presence as the lo- largest buyer and seller of vehicles in the nation. You know, on behalf of Newton. That's, that's the overall goal of what we look to do for our partners and what we're doing with our many municipalities across the state as well. So. You know, I know Tom had mentioned he presented the synopsis to you. That's kind of more so the overall goals of the program, but. That's the, that's the kind of thirty thousand foot view and then obviously Tom had just put out the, how does it actually happen? And how does it work? And we could walk through that as well. But with Enterprise Fleet Management too, and, and Tom had mentioned with this. Is we're looking at data points and meeting with you every year to be proactive as to what we're seeing in the automotive industry. So every year, we're going to be providing Newton an analysis and a plan to say, these vehicles provide Newton the best total cost of ownership. So what provides the best acquisition cost? How much can we project that it will be, you know, run for in terms of operating costs? And then what we're confident Enterprise can sell that vehicle for on behalf of Newton. And we're going to be providing those data points to you all year, multiple times a year with your local designated account team who's right here in Jersey. That's the whole idea and the intention of it. We like to be an extension of the town, right? At, at the end of the day, to your vehicles, it's your equity, you make the decisions that you need to. We're going to leverage Enterprise's national presence to provide you the best data points and options that are available to you every single year.
So Andrew, you say lease, but to me, that doesn't really sound like it's an actual lease. Because if we're the ones owning them and at the end of the term, you're selling them. And perhaps cutting us a check depending on what the market's looking like. It's really not a lease.
It's a great question. That's usually the first thing that's asked. It, it is essentially a finance. We acquire a vehicle, let's say for fifty thousand dollar. We put it on a term of five years. We write it down to a residual, so you're not paying it down to zero, of five thousand dollars. We know at that five-year term, we can sell it for ten or even fifteen. We pay off the balance, the rest is Newton's money. Whether you want us to cut you a check to put into the general fund, or you can choose to roll it into the replacement of that vehicle to continue to lower payments on it.
Be easier if we start walking through the profile and the analysis.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the, the lease is really just an accounting principle term. It's exactly more mirroring the finance and it allows for the flexibility. Where ninety-five percent of the population is more familiar with the term lease of a dealership style or what we call is a close-ended lease. You have thirty-six months, thirty-six thousand miles, anything over, there's penalties, any dings, dents, penalties. Again, you cannot turn the vehicle in early and then if you're looking to extend or buy out, there's typical that big balloon payment that's market value. What we utilize is what's called an open-ended equity lease, open-ended because of the flexibility. To Andrew's example, you take that fifty thousand dollar asset, a vehicle in this examples, you pay it down monthly, quarterly, annually. And then we as a collective partnership identify the optimal time to get out of that vehicle. Some vehicles, it may be two years, some vehicles, it may be five years, depending on the outfit, the customization. We can get these vehicles turnkey delivered, however the town would like. Most of our partnerships that we're working with are using uh emergency response, police department vehicle. So we have the equipments, the cages, the lights. We can include those into the payment as well. So in essence, when we identify the optimal time to get out of that vehicle. Anything we sell the vehicle for over the principal balance that's due, returned back. So over time, the fleet's going to start to fund itself versus a traditional buy and hold philosophy or bond and hold. Where you're continuing to make payments on a vehicle, even if it's not in your fleet today. And then from a safety perspective, the first thing that we did, and thank you everyone for giving us your fleet data, because a lot of times that's the hardest. Hardest thing is to get the actual data points, somebody tracking that. So we got the fleet of a, of forty-one vehicles that we assessed between DPW Police and all of the departments. We identified that sixty-six percent of those vehicles were older than five years. The reason we typically use five years as the initial benchmark is that's the useful life of a vehicle is typically after that five-year mark. So when we look at the current average hold, so your hold, your average age of your fleet is about eight and a half years. Based on your previous purchasing trends, you're holding vehicles for about thirteen and a half years. Our goal is going to shorten that hold cycle to be a five-year pattern. So we're getting out of vehicles when there's still value in them and having the fleet start to fund itself over time. Then, as Tom mentioned, your fuel efficiency is going to increase, your maintenance costs are going to decrease because, because now we're doing routine. Preventative maintenance versus reactive catastrophic repairs that take a little bit more downtime. And when we're looking at an average age of eight and a half plus, we're most likely putting money, repair costs into vehicles that aren't worth the repairs. And that's where you can lean on us as your partner to help um guide some of those recommendations over time. Um, over ten years, when we compare what the town is currently doing today, which is purchasing about three vehicles a year. Maintaining and fueling them, which the maintenance and the fuel, that's not going to change. Most of our government clients, they have their bulk fueling. And they have their in-house maintenance. What is going to change is the money that's spent on the repairs because there's a newer fleet. When we, and then selling vehicles at the right time. When we look at what you're currently doing today versus our phase-in approach over the next five to ten years. We're conservatively looking at about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars in savings. By getting out of vehicles at the right time, leveraging the flexible funding option, where you're not paying for a vehicle in full. We're paying for the portion of the vehicle as you utilize it. Some key safety features that we're looking at, so that's the first thing that we like, we have discussions when we're working with Tom and, and members of the town. Is some of the milestones in safety enhancements that have been implemented into a standard vehicle. And the first standard feature, and it feels very long ago, uh is the anti-lock brake standardization. And that was in two thousand and seven. Today, the town of Newton has three vehicles that predate two thousand and seven. The next, which uh the I, um, the safety standard of electronic stability control, that was standardized in two thousand and twelve. The town of Newton has seven vehicles that predate uh two thousand and twelve. Um, and then my wife's favorite, which is the backup camera, that was standardized in twenty eighteen. Uh, the backup camera, we have statistics that we've seen a reduction in accidents by fifty-one percent since the backup camera has been installed. And there's twenty-one vehicles that predate uh the twenty eighteen milestone. Not uncommon when we sit down and have these conversations with our first partnership or with our government clients. Now it's looking at how do we get to where we want to be, um, because we're tasked to accomplish more with less funding every single year. Our program provides that flexibility and a different way of looking at the fleet. Almost mirroring, I shouldn't say almost, mirroring the enterprise rent-a-car model. Of buying vehicles extremely well, which you do not sacrifice your buying power as a government entity. Um, finding the optimal time to rent or run these vehicles. And then selling the vehicles at the optimal time and taking advantage of the proceeds. Many people don't know this, but Enterprise as a company, we make more money selling vehicles than we do actually renting them. So taking that philosophy and evaluating the utilization of your fleet today. To help us to evaluate that optimal time. That gets us to that seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars conservative. And Tom was able to provide us, you know, the numbers, working with the departments of their vehicles. The specs in terms of the aftermarket equipment, the police department, these vehicles are not just a, a fifty thousand dollar SUV. There's additional tens, if not twenty-plus thousand dollars worth of equipment. So if we can pay for that as we utilize it. And as we replace vehicles, if there is any equipment that we can repurpose, it's yours. Anywhere from a cage to a snowplow, those are, that's your equipment that you can keep or elect to have us sell it. Uh, on your behalf, we'll provide those recommendations based on uh the market at the time. But in an essence, that's the results of taking that annual uh evaluation of your fleet. I have a team of client strategy managers, our office is right in Wayne, New Jersey. We're actually relocating to Persephone in the next couple of months. Um, they meet quarterly with our clients. We have an annual client review, which is our report card back of where we stand every year. We have what's called our fleet planning meeting, which is in essence what we've been working on with Tom. Over the last several months of evaluating your fleet and what our recommendation would be. And then we have a budget planning meeting. Um, government entities, we know the budget season and when it starts, so we want to get ahead of that to work with you and your departments. To create a uniform plan that makes the most financial and operational sense versus a wish list. Um, and then eval, and then having to prioritize a wish list, we can work on what makes the most financial sense. Based on market value, based off utilization. At the end of the day, the town is the final decision-maker. We're just a partner advising you on what we're seeing. And I promised Andrew I wasn't going to talk a lot and here I was on a, on a, so.
What he said.
Um, so I did talk a lot. Um, there, are there any questions?
In, in the model, where does Enterprise make, where do you make your money?
Fantastic question. So how we partner on the municipality side is we're a national purchasing cooperative. So we're the Sourcewell Preferred Partner uh for Fleet Management Services. Within that is our contracted rate. We have a small management fee that's built into the analysis and built into the monthly payment. Point one, uh, point one percent of the delivered cost of the vehicle. And that's for the account team, the ongoing consultation, the access to our uh website and portal. And then our team of National Service Department, um, should you need any additional maintenance recommendations or phone calls in.
I think you get a flat fee for selling the vehicles to.
Uh, yes, at the end of the term to sell the vehicle, it's four hundred dollars, but that's not actually a check that the town of Newton would be writing to Enterprise. It's part of the settlement statement. Um, so if a vehicle sells for, I'm going to use quick math because it's late on a Monday. Um, if the vehicle sells for fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars, the check back would be for fourteen thousand.
Okay. And then just really quick, without having looked at the details of the additional materials that you sent. So the ten-year savings projected north of seven hundred and eighty thousand, um, but we're talking about forty thousand a year. So to me, that straight math is not mapping. Is there, what, what's? Just back me into that number.
Yeah, absolutely. So each year, we're looking at different vehicles, so it's not the exact same cost every single year. If we look at the fleet list, um, with the green highlights on it, I just had it in front of me a second ago, I think it's under. But you'll see a, array of different vehicle types going from the police interceptors. To F four fifty cutaway, so chassis, box truck, box trucks, to utility trucks. So depending on the year that we're replacing those vehicles, that's where the different return of your existing fleet will come into play. So over time, as we phase in, compared to what you're doing today, which is paying cash and bonding for the vehicles. We're going to see the savings number at the beginning, where we're implementing thirteen vehicles in year one. For about a hundred thousand dollars less than what it would cost you to go out and, and purchase. The three vehicles that you're typically looking at replacing, which would be on average, I believe, two police interceptors in a given year and one DPW. Um, truck. And that's another thing that we evaluated with Tom, where the peaks and valleys of the vehicles that we're buying each year. In twenty, oh, I found my, I found my page uh in there. And in twenty twenty-three, we have six vehicles for that particular model year. In twenty twenty-four, we have two and the year prior, we had uh four. Not uncommon because we were coming out of COVID. Um, where vehicles were not necessarily a priority, it was the public safety um during.
That they be gotten.
Yeah. And that was also um something that we were lucky enough to be able to help our government entities with our economies of scale during those tough times. So our plan is to get us back to where we want to be financially able to achieve that goal. By not having to outlay cash to go out and buy seven to ten vehicles to get back on that proactive plan.
And the um, chief, the prior chief was telling me that he couldn't get it, a police car. burden uh was able to deal with them. Um, they cut out the middleman, so um. Steve was going down to like all the places in Morris Plains and Precipity or whatever to try and go to dealerships and beg for a car. They don't deal with that. They deal right from the manufacturer and they were giving Vernon, where he was going, how did, how did you guys get cars? And they were getting them like this because they don't have to deal with a dealership.
We actually had a car. That we have already sent the purchase order from or two. Couldn't get the car for a year. And then they charges four thousand dollars more.
And then it's sad because we couldn't get the equipment.
To get the car that we already bought.
And then we couldn't get the equipment or something that too, that sat for a while.
So like you, like, like Mr. Perry said, with Vernon was getting cars like. I mean, and he did.
And there is a list of of clients to deal with. Some by X songs, it was, it was in the, you know.
Yeah, that this one.
Yeah, on page four of the synopsis package.
Yeah, we wanna consistently like, you know, the the six police cars that we bought in twenty twenty three, right? That we're saying, okay, ideally we would replace in twenty twenty nine. Like, do we? Wanna keep boxing ourselves into buying six vehicles at it? I and I know it's not a buy, you're kind of rolling it over, but. You know, I, within a year and and you know, Joe or. Chief D'Antebell could answer this better, but like, you know, the six vehicles. You know, you have to get them equipped in the decal, right? And all that, so. You don't want to be down a vehicle or two while that's happening.
Right, but I think if if I took this correctly, if. When we get on this plan, when I turn in that vehicle. To get another one. The money that we get off of the residual value of that vehicle is now coming back into the fun. To fund the outfit on the new car.
Right.
Yeah, twofold, to to exa- exactly right there. We don't, we we know there can't be downtime, right? We can't take police vehicles off the road. We're probably already running a very lean. Police fleet, at least from our experience working with other municipalities. So our goal is to deliver a turnkey vehicle. So the the police chief can put that into operation immediately. And then we're disposing of the old vehicle. And then the resale proceeds for that would go back to the police to fund the next vehicle. So when we talk about the fleet funding itself. We would never take vehicles of the six police vehicles out of operation while you're waiting. For six vehicles to to arrive. That's that's the strategic planning meeting that my client strategy managers do every year. Because this is an initial plan. But I can tell you in twenty twenty one, the we were, the plans that were put in place in twenty eighteen, we didn't stick to those. Right? We had to find different alternatives based off availability, based off. Based off budgets and what they look like during uh, the pandemic. So that's the importance of having a partnership and not. You know, an acquisition source. Anybody can sell you vehicles if they have them. We're going to strategically plan. So in twenty twenty nine, those six vehicles. There might be a good chance that some of those vehicles are putting higher miles on, and we might be replacing them in two in twenty twenty eight. And then four in twenty twenty nine, but that's where it's an annual meeting. That we're discussing. So this was the initial plan based off age, odometer readings, utilization. And balancing out where not one department is replacing their entire fleet in in one year. Um, because you'd have one happy department and other departments that wouldn't be so happy um, from that. So it's a fluid conversation, but based off our internal. How our internal discussions. The first, you know, eleven to thirteen vehicles that we picked are the ones that are prioritized or needs based off of our conversations.
So I asked Adam and the chief to come to talk about some of their vehicles. What they have on the roof now.
Yeah, I mean, the the ones that we're replacing are like in in the green here. These are. Ancient, so to speak. And the reason why we keep these cars is. All of our traffic details, um, you know, uh, road jobs. You know, we need more than just, you know, four or five vehicles that are patrolling. We have people doing a multitude of things. Um, the thing I do like is by replacing these vehicles with new vehicles. It will also give us the opportunity to stagger. The use of the vehicles that we have. Are are five vehicles that are uh, up and running are running twenty four hours a day, seven days a week. They go from one shift to the next, to the next, to the next, to the next. And by replacing these older ones with actual nice vehicles. It'll give those cars some brakes, you know, uh, engine hour, like. We're we're not, we're not a mileage heavy town, we're three and a half square mile. But our engine hours are.
Sure.
It's, you know, well over our mileage. So I think that that's a positive. You know, to to get some. Good vehicles to kind of give them, give us a little break.
Um, yeah, a- absolutely. That's definitely part of the evaluation process. You know, city of Hoboken, they've been a partner of ours for. For several years, one square mile. But we're still looking at the actual usage of the vehicles in the resale market, because sometimes you may have a vehicle that's driving a little bit low miles. It has high engine. Miles, but we can sell that vehicle. So today, if we're running vehicles to the ground and we're scrapping them or getting maybe a thousand bucks. Um, from the auction results, if we're getting out of a vehicle at four or five years, you know, from a police vehicle capacity, we're seeing. Anywhere from fifteen to twenty six thousand, fifteen being those uh, police utility interceptors, twenty six being the Tahos. By getting out of them at the right time. So now you take that sixty thousand dollar asset and we're selling it for twenty thousand dollars, your cents per mile or total cost of ownership. Is much less by getting out of a vehicle at the right time versus running it till the wheels fall off. And then what a lot of organizations are not looking at is how much money are we putting in that ten year old vehicle? And it's eye opening to see a lot of times the operational expenses, when we talk total cost of ownership, is seventy to eighty percent. Of the vehicle and the sticker price, which everybody focuses on is closer to, you know, twenty five to thirty percent. So that's some of the evaluation that we're doing on a regular basis for our partners.
So. So the, if you look at the second page of the fleet profiles, we have eleven vehicles over a hundred thousand miles. That's. One quarter of our fleet, so it's a hundred thousand miles. Um, the other thing is probably about police cars, even with these snowplows. Uh, you can't have a snowplow down and some of those snowplow trucks are pretty niche and.
All of our trucks really, and all our trucks are used during the snow, so. It's different. So it doesn't take long for those to matter having them to clean them. Uh, they start their problems. And we have a much newer fleet now than we did when. A few years ago, but I mean. Some of the trucks I still consider new, I'm looking at here, they're already seven, eight years old, so it's kind of. Crazy to look back and think that, so it would avoid issues in the future and any major problems if we. We did this. And now that we also do more maintenance on the vehicles. I agree with with Joe, like the cop cars, this would be perfect for them because they have a lot of weird big one dive things that. They do with the cars that run all the time, and they're constantly bringing them out the garage, you get a look at for things and it would. It would save them a lot of time to have newer cars.
Yeah, I mean, I I. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think most of our maintenance. Heavy cost is in these. Green area. You know, it's it's our older cars that are costing us, you know, a lot. Um, quick question. Let's say we have a vehicle that doesn't have a lot of engine hours, that doesn't have a lot of miles. We still have the option to make, finish the payments on it and keep it if it's serving the purpose that we don't need to to. You know, replace it.
A- a- absolutely, right? And that's uh, even when we look, a lot of times we'll look at utilization patterns and. What we find is when we're replacing the vehicles more frequently, we can actually find an opportunity to reduce your overall fleet size by a couple of vehicles. Because what we find is we're holding on to some spares because we have so much downtime. Of a vehicle that's breaking down or in the shop. So if we can work on right. Sizing the fleet in terms of the utilization standpoint, then we would actually be able to find an opportunity to. Find the ideal fleet size versus holding on to a fifteen or a twenty year old vehicle for a what if or what it, our worst case scenario. Um, and a lot of times when you go to fire up that vehicle that's been sitting in the in the lot for a little bit and hasn't been used. It doesn't start and then you take it to the shop and now you're spending a couple hundred dollars to a couple thousand dollars to repair. An aged vehicle that only needs to be utilized a couple of times in a given month.
So since we're on the topic of maintenance, um, just a couple of questions. We just made a. Investment in our own, you know, fleet maintenance uh, department down at the DPW garage. Would, are we still utilizing that for, you know, the oil changes and all the the basic things?
Yeah, absolutely.
And then as far as, you know, these vehicles, just because they're new. You know, police cars, they've, you know, they're under high stress. Um, you could still get a component that breaks that, you know. We're we're do, and we can't, if we can't handle it at our. Uh, facility. I- is that something that we still handle on our own? And it's okay, or does it have to then go through enterprise to be repaired? How does that work? Does that look like?
All right, Andrew brought me to talk. Um, here, I was gonna talk anyway, so so that was more of a, that was more of a courtesy look to him.
No, he can't shut Andrew up.
Yeah, um, for this. So to to answer your question, you you have both options, right? So to maintain the vehicles today, take them to the garage facility to get the work done. You have that option. Enterprise, we also, we don't have enterprise garages, but we have eighty thousand partners nationwide. When we look at the town of Newton, I think we ran a query in in a ten mile radius. We have a handful of shops that we can utilize any dealership. So we're talking newer vehicles. Most of this should be warranty that we take it to the dealership. They all work with Enterprise because we had to bring our rental cars to the dealership for the warranty work. So that would all get handled directly with the manufacturer to get that repaired on. So when we're talking newer vehicles and it's not a routine PM, we always recommend to take it to the dealership. Because, you know, when it's a newer vehicle, whether it's thirty, it's thirty six months, thirty thousand. Miles or some of these fleet vehicles are going to have five year, a hundred thousand mile warranties. You know, we want to have them make sure anything is covered under warranty versus spending time doing that repair if we don't.
For sure, because we're not going to hit the miles, but yeah, we'll be under warranty. So I noticed, um, there is a. List of towns that you're currently working with, and I've heard Vernon mentioned a couple of times. Are there any other towns in Sussex County that you're working with?
Our Sussex County presence is, look, to be honest, it's 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 not much. I I don't know exactly how many, so we are trying to grow our presence in it, but um. You know. I can't think of one off the top of my head at the moment, but certainly.
May it might be helpful with Bob and the, and kind of walks through. We're halfway through our budget cycle already. Obviously, we'll do budget prep for next year in October, November, so the the timing might be a curious question. Because we didn't budget for this. We don't have any fun sitting around to do this. So I guess. What would be the logistical timing if the council's let this work, we're pursuing as far as budget cycle and, you know. How would you handle that?
Yeah, a- absolutely, right? So timing. It's not always going to be ideal, right? And the manufacturers don't release their pricing and order banks. To align with government budget cycles either. So it's a very popular conversation that we're ongoing having. So. In terms of the budget that is available, right? If there is. Right now, an allocation for two police cruisers, and let's just say that number would be a hundred thousand dollars or probably have to be close to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. For two fully outfitted police cruisers, what we would want to do is take a look at that hundred fifty thousand dollars that was allocated for the purchase of those vehicles. And how many vehicles could we get with that hundred fifty thousand dollars? And that was essentially what we had evaluated in on a twelve month roll. So knowing that we're in the middle. Uh, of a budget cycle and knowing that when we order these vehicles, it does take time for them to come in. We do have inventory that we can find. Um, for those immediate needs, but our typical best practice is to order each vehicles directly from the manufacturer. To replace the thirteen vehicles that are in green, we estimated about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars of annualized uh, payments. So again, if our budget that we have available right now is, you know, sixty five thousand for one. We can look at how many vehicles we can acquire with that one vehicle. If it's a hundred and fifty for two, we would look and evaluate how many vehicles we can get for that. And then as we approach the next budget cycle, then we would look at the evaluation of. Okay, what are the funds? What are we projecting for calendar year twenty twenty six or budget year twenty twenty six? And then we would place those orders because payment doesn't start until the vehicle arrives. Um, is is arriving at the dealership. So you're not prepaying for a vehicle to find out when the vehicle actually arrives at the dealership. It's four thousand dollars. Um, more that's part of our contract, um, when you're signing off on an order quote. That we have the numbers in line.
I think earlier you went over it too, uh. Like if the police department has Tahos now. Do you like? Hey, we got a good deal on Durango's, you know, or something like, or do they get? To select like, hey, we want to replace our Tahos with Tahos or?
It's a, it's a great question. You know, we focus everything around total cost of ownership where we run the numbers, but a lot of times the Tahoe is utilized for a specific application. You're carrying some sort of equipment uh, that fits in a Tahoe that doesn't necessarily fit in a Durango or the police interceptor. And then the. The manufacturers love to also change uh, their designs. Typically, it's every four to five years as well. So when new vehicles come into the scene, we also run those evaluations as as well. The Dodge Charger was a very popular vehicle and a lot of law enforcement. It was a little bit on the small end, but it was a very cost effective. Um, uh, emergency response pursuit rated vehicle. It went away. They stopped making it. And there there's talks of it coming back. So that's also changing some of the landscape of our conversations. For some police details, the divisions within the police department that, hey, listen. I could use a cost effective. Pursuit rated sedan for this particular application. So to answer your question, we look at total cost of ownership. Um, but it needs to make sure not only make the most financial sense, but operational sense as well. The town is always the end all be all decision maker. We just essentially do the bidding on your behalf to present the numbers.
Um. So with enterprise, most of the state contract vehicles of were limited. Right? Tahoe. Durango. Ford Explorer, so on, so on.
Yep.
I want a Chevy Traverse for my technical.
Yep. Very popular conversation that we're having. So because through our source wealth contract, it's for fleet management services, which is a professional service. We would actually facilitate the bid on your behalf for that midsize to full size SUV. We would present back the Chevy Traverse, a a non-pursuit rated Durango. Uh, Nissan, a Toyota, you would make that end decision, but it's actually a very common. Instead of doing the hammy down of now I'm just giving a hundred thousand mile uh. Patrol vehicle that has been running for seven days a week, twenty four hours to now.
Resource officer.
Yeah, yep.
Yep, you know, like, it wouldn't need. I could, I could theoretically buy. Whatever car I, you know, we looked at rather than the locked into the state contract, you know.
True, yeah, Li- Livingston has actually implemented that instead of doing the trickle down approach, they're actually ordering the vehicle that fits the application. Uh, for it. So, you know, two years ago was the Chevy Malibu or last last model year when we were looking at was the Chevy Malibu for some of their. Um, police departments that didn't need, you know, the the black and white typical um. Uh, per pursuit rated vehicle. So yeah, those are fluid conversations as well.
Mayor, two quick questions.
Okay.
Um. I didn't hear anything mentioned about EVs or hybrids, so curious where that is in. Pantheon of enterprise. And then the second question that. That are being thought of here and not being said yet. Um, we don't own or operate the first aid squad, obviously we support the squad, so I'm curious. So any benefit as far as ambulances? That they could parlay being the official volunteer organization for the town, even though they're not under our operation. I'm just curious.
No, both both great questions. So the first question's for EVs and and sustainable sustainability initiatives. We're ready when you're ready. Um, you know, town of Livingston is starting to look at some administrative and different departments to go EV. The city of Hoboken has a full sustainability push. Um, where they're running Mach E, um, Fords for some of their. Police vehicles because they're not really pursued because they're one square mile uh, or that, but uh, we're also looking at sustainability. So hybrid. Is a big topic. Hybrids were nearly impossible to get for the last couple of years based on allocation. We're now seeing more manufacturers standardize their their hybrid model. Um, and so, you know, that's something that we're also looking at. When the vehicles are there now, the DPW trucks, the four fifties, the three fifties, you know, the manufacturers aren't quite there for a hybrid. Um, you know, the the half ton pickup trucks that are now going electric. You know, those are expensive vehicles, you know, it's it's not a typical. You know, regular cab work truck. Um, it's a seventy thousand dollar E EVs, but if the initiative is there, um.
No, don't test the trucks, Adam.
What about the ambulance?
And the and the ambulance, so we are not at a position as a company to do ambulatory units yet. Now, if there are emergency response, um. Explorers or pursuit rated, those are vehicles that we would be able to assist with. We actually just started a partnership with Rockland Paramedic. Um, where they have eighty ambulatory units that were not helping. Um, where they have eighty ambulatory units that we're not helping them with, but they have twenty-five um, pursuit-rated explorer-type vehicles that we are assisting them with. It's a top, similar conversation when we talk about fire department as well, we can't do the fire trucks. But if there's pickup trucks or SUVs, we are working with our, those departments.
I guess, uh, yeah, I was thinking, because you do list, um, two of the vehicles, there's actually four rigs to the first aid squad. Two of them are listed, and one of them is in the green, and that's why I was going to be asking that very question, how are you reading my mind again? Okay.
So in all reality, neither of them should be on there, because they're all privately owned.
Privately owned.
That's why I was curious.
Thank you for asking that.
What, what is your, uh, municipal client attrition?
What was the question, sorry?
What, what's your municipal client attrition rate?
Attrition rate, so this year we've brought on, um, fifteen new government clients out of
Those leaving, sorry.
Oh, and yeah, so bringing on about fifteen a year and our retention rate is ninety-eight percent um, from municipality, um, I can know one municipality that has left enterprise in the last year and it was administrative change. Um, where the new council that came in, they wanted to evaluate what they thought was a better plan, um, moving forward.
So, uh, looking at potential exposure down the road, if that were to be the consensus, you know, in the future, what what is a a a reintegration cost look like? Once you walk away from the vote.
Well, since the vehicles are are in essence, you're making payments towards ownership rights, you would continue making payments, and once the vehicle's fully paid off, the the asset would essentially become yours. Um, so in terms of having to reinvest to get your fleet back, there is no reinvestment, um, per se. That question comes up all the time.
Cause again, it's not a traditional lease, we're, it's, we're really the owners.
Exactly.
So then we would just pay them off and then do what we're doing today.
Yeah, we would, we would still own all performance data, telemetrics and such.
Yeah, that was my first question, is like, if we wanted to cut your goose, there's no NPs, there's no anything, they just, oh, by the way, they do a license, they do license plates. They do registrations, they, they do anything, so we don't have to hire somebody to go get license plates. And all that kind of stuff, it's, it's taken care of.
Except for confidential plates?
Correct.
So like our confidential places, uh, detective bureau car, um, my car. Other than that, all the rest of them?
Yeah, we provide you the paperwork, you can, you can do that.
Yeah, we like physically have to go to Trent to get to do that.
Other questions?
What's those?
So I think, um, I, we we sit on it, we think about it, um, I guess, you know, we can come back next, next meeting. Uh, give me your insights on everything, um, you have any questions? About some off-time, if he doesn't have the answer, I can, I'm always emailing Andrew. You know, with, uh, stuff, we go through this for a long, um, so.
So we're looking at an, about an annual savings right now, projected, projected to be about forty thousand dollars. Is that what, I'm just looking at this?
When you're looking at the net sustainable impact, that's actually from years ten to fifteen. So we're only showing the first ten years as we phase out of your existing owned fleet, forty-one vehicles over the next five years. The last five years that are shown here are representing us replacing an open-ended equity lease with an open-ended equity lease, so you're starting to see the return of your asset and column equity lease. And then as we progress the partnership forecasting on numbers that aren't on this page, you would estimate forty thousand dollars per year by getting out of vehicles at the right time moving forward. So that's why the math of the ten years, you know, seven hundred and eighty thousand divided by ten doesn't equal forty thousand. So the net sustainable is, if this were to go into eternity, each year replacing leased vehicle for leased vehicle would be about forty thousand dollar return.
I mean, my opinion is even if we didn't, I, that's icing on the cake, even if we broke even, we still get newer cars and we're now bonding older cars until they die, um, so even if it was break even, it's still a win. Uh, the the savings is just, uh, icing on the cake, if you ask my name.
Okay, that's good perspective.
If I could maybe provide one homework assignment. Uh, maybe looking at the, uh, uh, the client list that was named in the packet that we received and to reach out to those municipalities and just, you know, brief conversation or say, hey, you know, pros and cons, what do you like, what don't you like? Your phone, and then just give us a sentence or a summary.
Yeah, like a random selection, right?
Yeah, some of these were ex-clients of mine, uh, so I know the people to reach out to, Pomp and Licks is my, was my home where my, uh, burning firm was, Wes Mopery's been a client of ours for like forty years. Um, burning was a client of mine.
How many total municipal clients do you have in New Jersey?
Up to eighty-three. Yes. Yeah, so we have eighty Yeah, eighty-three New Jersey municipalities and that could increase tomorrow. Um, from then, we're overseeing about four thousand vehicles in total, and we have about two thousand of them on lease. So about fifty percent of the partners that we're working with, they've already replaced about half of their fleet. The other fifty percent, that's part of our fleet planning conversations that we have every single year.
Do you like a big display of the leased municipality and changing the vehicles or not?
Uh, so Town of Livingston brought one of our vehicles down there, so, uh, Anne and the team over there were insistent on uh, bringing one of our new ones, and then we were just at a security expo um, where we partnered with, um, Elite Solutions, and they had a handful of our clients, and they had a pretty big display uh, there, so yeah, I mean, and the GFOA, I don't know if anybody had the privilege of going there, but I was a guest speaker right before the happy hour um, on the first day. I know people were only there because it was an accredited. It was an accredited meeting, but I appreciate those who were, who were in attendance, I think there were over three hundred people who got a a credit uh, from listening to me blab about fleet management, or total cost of ownership, I should say.
Alright, so we'll, if you guys mull it over, we'll get some feedback and then we'll put it on one more time to fly one way or the other.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And if there's any other questions, you know, I I know there's a chain of command or what you have to follow here, but don't hesitate to reach out to Anne or I or work through Tom, um, more than happy to help. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferry. Alright, so we will move on to our ordinance, we have a second reading and public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen. This is an ordinance providing funding for various pool improvements for the town of Newton and appropriating thirty-six thousand dollars for such purpose. I'll open the hearing to the public. Anyone in person to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Russo, any, anybody online wishing to speak on this ordinance?
No hands raised.
Alright, we'll close the hearing to the public, I have a motion to act.
I'll make the motion to act on ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seventeen.
A motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Deputy Mayor Dixon, roll call please.
Mr. Kuss.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor LaFaw.
Yes. Alright, the consent agenda, all items listed during the asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the town council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member still requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda, Mr. Russo, can you run down the resolutions?
Sure, one eighty-seven is the certification of the audit, one eighty-eight is bid award or resolution award for bid and construction phase services for PSNS for pump station consolidation, one eighty-nine. It's HQW for twenty-eight thousand two fifty for firehouse design professional services, Harold Pello, same project fifty-five thousand is one ninety. One ninety-one, we're submitting a grant for Diller Avenue and Stewart Street resurfacing, one ninety-two increases the bid threshold from the state of New Jersey to fifty-three thousand, one ninety-four accepts and approves corrective action plan for the audit, one ninety-five is the award for phase one sewer rehab PM construction, three million, eight thousand two sixty-three. We have one ninety-six, which is a refund of a pool membership, one ninety-seven, shared service with Hampton, we're both, um, working on the resurfacing of Plotz Road which we both own, one ninety-eight is, uh, another I-Bank favorite from Tom Ferry, one ninety-nine is professional services for engineering, fifteen thousand, bills and vouchers, two hundred, and then we have one off-consent resolution.
Uh, so speaking of I-Bank, um, Mr. Ferry, I'm assuming that you saw the article where Newton was there you are, Town of Newton was featured, um, by New Jersey I-Bank, uh, Water Infrastructure News. Um, so I'm sure that you probably have already shared that, or they probably received it, LNA and the team, but, um, that was nice for
Yes, it was really nice.
To be featured. Alright, any, uh, questions or discussions on any of the resolutions under consent agenda?
I just have one question, why are we looking to increase the, um, the threshold amount from the seventeen-five to?
Now, seventeen-five's pay-to-play, they're increasing the bid amount from forty-four, it's new state law.
Okay, thank you.
And we have a qualified purchasing agent, so it changes the quote threshold and the bid threshold as of July first.
Anybody else, any of the consent agenda items?
Okay, should we have a motion?
I'll motion to, uh, offer the consent agenda as presented.
And I will second.
Alright, I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented by Deputy Mayor Dixon and seconded by Councilwoman Teets, a roll call please.
Mr. Kuss.
Abstain, you have checked number one, three, five, 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 yes, other ones.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor LaFaw.
Yes. Alright, so then we have resolution one ninety-three dash twenty twenty-five. This is authorizing the purchase of a Chevrolet Tahoe police pursuit vehicle through New Jersey state contracting, purchasing and property T two seven seven six dash twenty-one dash oh one four eight five. Any discussion? Alright, do we have a motion on the resolution?
I'll make a motion on the resolution, one ninety-three dash twenty twenty-five.
Second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Dixon and a second by Councilwoman Diglio, roll call please.
Mr. Kuss.
I abstain.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor LaFaw.
Yes, alright, let's, uh, open the second public session of the meeting. And if anybody wishes to speak, please come forward to the microphone, identify yourself. We have nobody in person, Mr. Russo, anyone online?
No, Raines.
Alright, we will close the second public portion and go then to any additional counsel and manager comments, Mr. Russo.
Okay.
Councilman Kuss.
Just like to add one thing that I forgot to begin, um, at our last meeting, uh, Mr. Fady from West End Avenue came um, noting some excessive speed on West End Avenue requesting increased enforcement. And, uh, I have seen, uh, that firsthand multiple times, uh, haven't been to the recipient. Um, but I have, I have definitely seen, uh, the patrols out there, um, doing enforcement, so it's great to see the responsiveness of them.
Thanks to that reminder, I too, I take West End pretty often and I've seen them, um, anything else?
So that's all I.
Alright, Councilwoman Diglio.
Nothing at this time.
Councilwoman Teets.
No, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Dixon. Mr. Russo, did I already ask you? Okay, uh, with nothing else this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at eight thirty-six PM.
I will make the motion to adjourn at eight thirty-six PM.
Awesome.
Alright, I was gonna say, no one wants to go home, alright, I have a motion by Councilwoman Diglio and a second by Councilman Kuss, all in favor? Alright, thank you.